I will call the September 10th, 2024 Pleasant Ridge City Commission meeting to order. Could we have a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Certainly. Commissioner Budnick?
Here.
Commissioner Lenko?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Schmier?
Here.
Mayor Scott?
Here.
All right, we'll move on to public discussion.
Sounds like me.
I think it's you.
Good evening, I'm Joe Papalian. As you all know, I own the property at 131 East Oak Ridge, 6 Woodward Heights Pleasant Ridge, and the house at 137 East Oak Ridge, Ferndale. So, the opening debut of Knox was a disaster, in my view. On August 17th, I sent an email to all of you of all the problems that I had with that, with people parking in my lot. And when I politely asked the woman to leave, she answered by a stream of profanity. Eventually, she left, and things only got worse because the alley was blocked, and then a number of patrons decided to participate with their marijuana and alcohol on my wall. So, I sent you photos, I sent an email on August 17th, and I got no response from anybody. And then on August 24th, the following Saturday, there were two more Knox customers that were seated on my cement step in the Ferndale property, enjoying their purchases from Knox. I asked them to leave, and they did. And I sent another email, and I finally got a response from your city manager, suggesting that I contact the police department when this happens. And believe me, I will do so, and I'll contact both police departments, as you recommended, Jim, even though that property is in Ferndale. But after that, I did meet with the Director of Compliance, who seemed to be, again, saying he wants to be a good neighbor. And since then, things have been certainly a lot better than when the Hertz people were there. But I assure you, when I see problems like this, and I do have video up there, I will not be hesitant to report them, and I hope that you take action if it's necessary. And I know, I'm going to point out again, your ordinance talks about no residential structure, structure, within 200 feet of a marijuana facility. And, you know, Mr. Brickman has said they've measured with a Google, and it's 200 feet, but that's to a house. If you look at the structure at 10 Woodward Heights, which is a garage of a residential purpose, that's clearly within 200 feet. I'm not making an issue of it now, but you're on notice that if things ever get really bad, I will make an issue of it. Anyway, I appreciate your hearing me out, appreciate the emails, appreciate the response, and I commit to you that I will document problems as they come up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do appreciate your emails.
Yeah, I don't know if you really do, but...
We do.
Yeah, it creates a paper trail.
Oh, it does.
And a record, absolutely.
It does create a record. I'm not trying to paper it, I just want you aware of the issues. But, believe me, it's much better now than it was with Hertz. So, maybe the demand isn't there, maybe there is sufficient parking, and it will be okay.
Right. We'll keep tabs on it as, you know, their business grows to make sure that things don't pop up.
And I will as well.
I'm sure.
Okay, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public discussion today? No? All right, we'll move on to liaison reports. Commissioner Budnick?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Tom. So Shawnee's not here tonight, she's attending a statewide Parks and Recreation Leadership Conference. So, she's hoping to bring back some fresh programming, and it's amazing the programming that she's been able to manage, and it's awesome to see her searching and seeking out new stuff for all of us. Here's what we have going for the rest of the month, and things to put on your radar. Monthly movies are back, first Thursdays of the month. Showtimes are 12:00 PM and 6:00 PM. Flu shots are also available at the community center on Thursdays, September 26th and October 10th, from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. The very much anticipated Fall Fest and Hay Ride will be on Sunday, October 13th, from 4:00 to 6:00, at Gainesboro Park. They'll have family fun, entertainment, pumpkin, cider and donuts, and a hay ride around town like usual with the Briarlar folks, thanks to all of the sponsors, Robert Campbell, Briarlar, and Oakland County Parks. Friday Fun Nights at the Community Center, that's Friday, October 18th, from 6:00 to 9:00. A fun night for kids ages 5 to 12 at the community center. Kids will be able to play games, do crafts, and have a delicious snack. Camp and pool staff will be on site to provide a fun and safe environment. And last, exercise class for the 50 and up club trips are online, so please check the event details online there. A Fall Rigger will be in the mailboxes by the end of the month, and specific dates and times for not only recreation events, but also voting information, leaf pickup, which is a huge one, and more will be there. And Shawnee also wanted to extend a thank you. So she wanted to say thank you very much to the summer staff for coming to work every day with a smile on their face, ready to tackle the day. She said, "We felt so lucky to have such a kind staff. They felt more like family than employees. Even on days off, staff would drop in to visit, like Jim's daughter, and see what was going on." "We set all-time high attendance for our teen night swim events, since most of the staff would either stay late to come back and join in the fun. Now that they're all back in school, we're wishing them a safe year with lots of learning and extracurricular experiences, so they will certainly be missed." And an even bigger thank you from Shawnee to Greg for his hard work and dedication to the pool, programs, and residents. The pool is a huge undertaking that residents couldn't even imagine, keeping the pool chemicals balanced to a parts per million and whatever that means, maintaining the work schedule of 30 teenage staff, four home swim meets, and every small detail that entails. So, 207 swimmers and their families as well, and the list goes on. Pool special events, camp days at the pool, and he makes it look effortless. So, big thanks to Greg and Shawnee. Shawnee said this is her 26th year. I don't think the math works out, she's not that old of working professionally. It's hands down the best, she said. So that's encouraging, and she just wanted to thank the residents as well for joining in and making it a great, great summer.
So, thank you, Shawnee.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Shawnee and Greg.
The REC Commission will meet next month. That should be the day before Halloween, that'll be October 30th will be our regular meeting, and we haven't had a meeting for a month here, so just wanted to give everybody that notice. And I think that's it, Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Commissioner Budnick? All right.
The whole schedule sounds fun.
It does sound fun.
Yep.
I'll move on to Commissioner Perry.
Thank you, Mayor. The Arts Council met on Wednesday, August 21st, right here, and they have been reviewing the feedback from the community framework charrette, and are continuing that with the next meeting, which is going to be on Wednesday, September 18th, at 4:30 PM right here, starting right here at City Hall. And they're just considering all the different input, the spaces of the city, and everything like that. So, it's very exciting. That's all I have.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, me. Mayor Scott for Public Schools. Would Public Schools like to speak?
Yay!
Anything to add tonight?
Not tonight. Everything's just, it's the new school year, we're just getting started. Probably next month, we'll have some things to share out with you, but not this year.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir.
So far, back to school's been awesome.
Yes.
Yeah, well-oiled machine.
It has. Thank you so much for hoping for a wonderful school year.
Awesome, thank you. All right, on to Commissioner Lenko for planning and DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Planning Commission met in August. As everybody knows, the Planning Commission meets the fourth Monday of, what is it? Four times a year. So, the next meeting is going to be October 28th, if anybody's interested to join. Before then, on October 16th, will be the final workshop with regards to the Community Master Plan. So, at 6:00 PM on October 16th, at the REC or Community Center, will be the final summary workshop. Very proud of the work that's been done so far. At the last DDA meeting in August, McKenna came and presented. It's a very solid presentation, they had digested the feedback from the previous workshops and the survey, are beginning to socialize their initial findings. The meeting on October 16th will further buttress those assumptions and findings, and then the next step would be to present the recommendation to the Planning, or to the City Commission, as well as to the neighborhood, and surrounding neighborhoods, right? So, I think there's a 65-day window where all interested stakeholders have a chance to review and digest. So, perhaps we'll adopt the Master Plan Q1, Q2 of 2025. But really, the next meeting is October 16th, if you have a burning desire to add content to the current plan. And, like I said, October 28th will be the next DDA meeting, so there'll be more after that. So, please stay tuned. On the website, there's the timeline and more information. Am I missing anything?
The project website is pleasantridgeplans.com. That doesn't work, by org. Pleasant Ridge Plans dot com.
I can't remember which.
Just looked at it today.
It's great work, though. They're well-presented and nothing alarming or outlier issue. I mean, it's pretty, as you'd expect, but seeing it all kind of memorialized and contained is, they're doing great work, so proud of it.
For residents who did not come to the last meeting and want to see that presentation, is it also available on pleasantridgeplans.com? And I apologize that I have not looked, but is there a way that residents can see?
It would be in the meeting packet, which is available on the website. But no, we don't record DDA meetings.
So, there's none of that presentations or anything on the, okay.
Well, it would be, it would be in the...
So, all of the, when McKenna came at the last Planning Commission meeting, they were giving a summary of the report, which memorializes everything that happened at the ice cream social workshop and the first visioning workshop, the survey results. So that's all going to be posted to the project website.
Okay, okay.
So, they were giving a summary of what will be available on that, Pleasant Ridge Plans.
Awesome. So eventually, it will all be, okay.
So, there's a sneak peek, there's one more workshop, and then there will be the official plan. But then again, there's a 65-day window to further modify it if required. So, there's still several more dates.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Schmier and Historical Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the museum will be open September 21st, which is a Saturday, 10:00 AM until noon. Again, if anyone cannot make it during that time but wants to come to the museum, just get in touch with me or send an email to historical@cityofpleasantridge.net? Net org?
Org.
Oh, sorry, I just, I had a moment. Also, Historical just actually purchased a scanner. So if anyone has anything that they want to put into their home file but wants to maintain the originals, stop by when the museum is open or make an appointment, and they could be scanned there and put directly into the file. Do you have a question?
No, I was going to add, at the pool on like one of the days, I heard somebody talking about a construction project, and they were finding stuff from like the 20s on their original. And I just want to encourage anybody who finds cool stuff when they're doing construction to drop it off there, that's...
Absolutely. Anyone has anything, whether you think it's, I mean, anything you have, even if it's actually new pictures of your current house, anything, bring it by. You can email it to Historical, if you have a hard copy, bring it in, it can be scanned. So Historical's really, especially this year, has been really focusing on just bumping up the digital records too. So there's a house file, a digital house file for all of the houses also. Beyond that, we had a meeting this last week, and a lot of that was talking about some of the repairs that are active and need to be done on the Historical Museum, which is an older building. So, there are some repairs beyond just the railings, which are actively being worked on, but the building is old. Reminds me a little bit of my garage with the repairs that need to be done. So anyway, they're talking about that. And when you support a lot of, you know, the home and garden tour and a lot of the historical events, that money is going back into the Historical Commission and to maintain that building also. So, that is all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Former Historical Commissioner Amber Herrick was asking me if you are going to put any of the water main and maybe the fire hydrants in there or auction them off.
Oh, people, there was a discussion about putting lead, lead service lines in there.
Historical.
So we actually, we've asked the contractor and the engineers to get a section of the old water main, just for show and tell purposes. I think it'll be instructive to people to see what the old ones actually look like.
Plexiglass box.
Yeah, because they kind of smell that. They replaced one of the fire hydrants already. So we have the riser that went up to the fire hydrant from the water main, and it smelled pretty bad when they brought it in.
Wow.
So yeah, we are asking for that, and we've also asked for the old fire hydrants, so the 1898 ones. So, yeah, maybe we'll auction them off or something.
Or a nice picture. Or a nice picture of it.
Great.
Cool.
So yeah.
All right.
Maybe they work well at the dog park.
Yeah.
Oh my gosh, that's it.
Right.
Done.
Call those old fire hydrants.
All right.
I wouldn't put 125-year-old in a dog park. Sorry.
No worries. We'll move on to governmental reports.
Good evening. Good evening. I saw Chief Robinson out on the road today. We were out on an injury accident. Everyone is luckily okay. But she wanted to let me know that she couldn't be here tonight, but that she hopes to be here soon with her new deputy chief that Ferndale Fire got. So hopefully, we'll see them next month. As far as the police department is concerned, we have not had any reports of anything stolen out of any cars since before last commission meeting, so that's good. My officer tonight said, "Hey, when you're out there, can you let people know?" I don't know, you know, how often they know, but lock your doors. I said, "Oh, you know what, that's a brand-new thing, I'll let everybody know." "Please, lock the doors." He's been the one taking those reports from last month, so...
On cars or houses?
Everything.
Everything.
Everything. Lock cars and houses. I know at my house, before I go to bed, I grab the key fobs, make sure the doors are locked. Real quick, real simple, and alleviates a lot of problems. Just wanted to let everybody know the scams are going. If you get a call, I hope it is true, but I can tell you, it's probably not true that you did not win the Publishers Clearinghouse. That was one from last week. If anything sounds weird, if anyone's going to give you money, they're just going to send you a check, they aren't going to call you on the phone, they aren't going to have you go to CVS and get gift cards, they aren't going to have you go to your bank and do a wire transfer because you have to give them 10% so they can give you 110% back. It's just, if it is too good to be true, it probably is. If you think that it might be legit, call us. We will be more than happy to investigate that for you. But we are continuing to get the scam calls, so... Other than that, I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we move on to the consent agenda. In the packet, I'll recommend that everybody look at the resolutions that we put in to recognize National Suicide Prevention Month and National Recovery Month. Oakland County Health Network is a resource for anyone in town that might have concerns on these issues. And of course, if you have any questions, you can reach out to me, and I'll help you get in contact with them, and we'll, it's a good resource.
Yes, my, Chief mentioned it previously a couple meetings ago, but I believe if you do have unused prescriptions or other such things, you can drop them off at the police station without questions asked, just to dispose of safely.
Absolutely. We ask that you put them into a Ziploc bag, so just take your bottles, empty the prescriptions into a Ziploc bag. We don't take needles, and we don't take liquids. But any pills, throw them in a Ziploc bag, can drop them off at the front desk, and you'll see we have the cabinet in our lobby now, so you can actually watch us dump it into the safe, so...
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And on the suicide, I think 988 is the 911 emergency hotline?
Yes.
Just wanted to put that in the universe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. May we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second. Any other discussion? May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
It was Lenko.
But yes.
My bad guys, sorry. Commissioner Lenko? Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. All right, we'll move on to Sylvan two-side parking.
Thank you. So we implemented two-sided parking on Sylvan a year ago. It was September of 2023, and it's been a year. The change settled in, and we didn't really hear much about it. So that's usually a sign that things are going okay. We collected traffic counts at three points last year before implementing the change, and we tried to avoid the worst impacts of the Woodward construction last year, so that definitely changed some travel patterns. And then we collected three points, traffic counts at three points after the change was implemented. So one late last fall, and then one this spring, and then one over the summer. You can see that the change appears to have had some impact. Average vehicle speed was down from 24.9 to 24.1 miles an hour. The percentage of speeding vehicles went down by nearly 10%, and the 85th percentile speed did drop a little bit. We also sent a survey out to the residents of the block to ask, were they in favor of keeping two-side parking? And then also gave them the chance to provide any qualitative comments that they had about their experience living with this for the last year. All of those comments are included in the City Commission packet, so you can review those if you like. But nine of the 14 were in favor, 14 respondents were in favor of keeping the two-side parking. Four wanted to go back to one-side parking, and one wasn't sure. So that's 64 in favor of keeping it. We did also receive one comment from a resident who sent an email, and the entire City Commission was included on that last week, so you've seen that, who was enthusiastically in favor of keeping the two-sided parking in place. So those are the, that's the background on our experience so far with this. The next steps are to either, this was done as a temporary measure for a period of a year, so at this point, the next steps are to either pass a traffic control order, which a draft is included in your packet, to make two-side parking on Sylvan permanent, beneficial. Or the second resolution would be to return to the status quo ante of one-side parking only on the south side of the street. And I should point out that passing a traffic control order and making this permanent, of course, that can be changed in the future. The entire city used to have two-side parking until the 90s, when they passed a traffic control order going to one-side parking only. So, you know, this is not the final say forever and ever, but it would make this permanent barring some, something bubbling up to bring the question back before us in the future. If you have any answer, any questions you have?
Any questions from anyone?
Segueing on that last topic, would it be a similar process, you know, if five years down the line, they would do a petition or something along those lines? Is that what you envision? Like, I'm supportive of it, I just want to follow that idea through.
Yeah, I think we would, given that we would, we've gone through the, if this is made permanent and the traffic control order is passed tonight, I think, yes, we would go through that same petition process to reverse it back.
Okay.
I think it's a fair process.
How many homes are there on that first part of Sylvan?
I think it's 17.
High address is 17, but...
And I think it starts at one, I'd have to count, but it's in that 16 or 17 range, so...
I would've guessed 12, but probably more than that.
Are there any additional signs or other things that need to change as a result of passing the, it just basically stays as it is?
It would stay as it is.
Great. Okay.
No, I was encouraged by the comments, you know, people definitely thought about their responses, and I think, I mean, as we saw, 64% were in favor. And I think they were strongly in favor and had good things to say, so...
I think one thing, I will add this, from those who were in favor of going back to one-side parking, their comments kind of got at the point. They didn't, they seemed to not like the fact that this created friction in terms of a driver having to stop, or sometimes a driver had to stop, would be angry or honk their horn or speed away once they had to stop. And that's unfortunate, that's people, and you will have that with some small percentage of drivers, but that friction is exactly what creates the slower traffic speeds and the traffic calming and reduces that...
More tension and all of that.
Right. So that is the problem, or not the problem, but...
A solution.
That's the, right, that is, that's all part of the package of, you know, if you want change on the street, then some of these other...
It's a trade-off.
It's a trade-off, yeah.
Right.
It has been really nice to sort of see, it just sort of flows. It has not, you know, as, you know, after the first couple weeks, it's like you really saw no questions, no whatever. You know, there's always a little bit of a social media outcry, and then people are like, "Oh, I can do this." And, you know, it's a nice, yeah, it seems to flow really nicely. And it does give, a lot of the residents who have younger kids have a nice, they like the buffer with their front yard, too.
Cool.
Yeah, Mayor, the, I think it's interesting to, we have some context with Woodward Heights, and especially looking at what the residents wanted. And it was hard to get some consensus, so assuming even that unsure didn't know that one person was added to the returning to one-sided parking, it's still a 2/3 of keeping it two-sided parking, which is a pretty significant number. And there was, yeah, the one strongly for, the email we had, there was also one strongly against, that entertained potentially moving. So, you know, that kind of balanced out. But with all the construction and increased traffic in the area, I think that this, the numbers, the mild increase in calming the street has been a win. And with no money, and with, it's, it can be reversed, as Jim said. So I think this is, it's progress.
It is. And I think this actually is a really good example of the whole process, kind of from start to finish, you can see that Sylvan got together and came with a solution that was no cost, which is nice, but also could be implemented right away, which is, you know, one of the issues we had with Woodward Heights and the striping, there was this delay. So this was an easy way to test it out, and then we continued to check in with the residents of Sylvan and to really look at it over a year before making any final decisions. So I think for all people in all streets, I mean, you know, this is a good example of a process that did work and could work for other streets if, you know, they wanted or needed to take a step like this.
And thanks to Sylvan for all their replies, very thoughtful replies to what's going on. That was helpful, just to read through their comments.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Let's have a motion.
So, Mayor, I move to approve the attached traffic control order making two-sided parking permanent for the first block of Sylvan.
Second.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Okay, let's talk about money.
We'll make this one quick. This is our annual cash and investments report, updating the City Commission on where our general surplus funds are invested and what those returned last year, and then also our Parks and Recreation Endowment Fund. The city had $9.9 million of fund balances invested on June 30, 2024, and of this, $6.94 million was invested in local government investment pools that returned $348,490 last year, so that's a 5.13% return. Local government investment pools invest in very, very liquid, short-term, very safe investment instruments that are allowed by state law. The Parks and Rec Endowment Fund is a special fund that was set up in 2015. That can be invested under the pension fund rules, so all market investments are open to invest in for that fund. That fund is invested in Vanguard in two funds, a 60-40 and an 80-20 fund equally. So we have a 70-30 stock-to-bond portfolio. We keep it simple. Last year, that $3.119 million was invested in the Parks Endowment Fund, and that returned $372,000 last year, a 13.5% return. So the local government investment pools summary is here. We had invested primarily in the Oakland County investment pool. They have a longer term, they purchase longer-term, longer duration, more mortgage, not 2008 derivatives mortgage back. They're much safer and more regulated now than they used to be, but they had longer durations. So last year, when the Fed was raising interest rates, the Oakland County investment pool wasn't seeing increased returns, just because they were in long-term, long-duration instruments that had been purchased when interest rates were half a percent or zero. So we started investing with MyClass. MyClass is another local government investment pool. They have a shorter duration investment philosophy. They invest in largely 60- to 90-day instruments. So they're very interest rate sensitive. Whatever is current is where they're at. So making that change, you'll see, we went from a 1.5% return in fiscal year '23 to a 5.13% return in fiscal year '24. So that was a great benefit. We went from returning $60,000 to almost $350,000 last year. So putting our money to work for us. The Parks Endowment Fund, briefly, since it's been, since it was initiated in 2015, has returned the city about $1.5 million over the last almost 10 years now. It supported the big room renovation project at the community center. It largely supported the pavilions at Gainsborough Park and the pool. The foundation also contributed to those projects, but the majority of the funding came from the endowment fund. So that was all investment returns with no tax money used to complete those projects. So this has been a very good thing for us. It currently stands at about $3.25 million. So of that $2 million that was invested, we've done well.
That's great.
And there's more detail about annual returns in the, in the packet. So I won't belabor the point, but one other recent point of news that we've gotten, and I added one because this was just released today. But Standard and Poor's and Fitch have both upgraded our debt rate, upgraded our debt ratings. So Standard and Poor's upgraded us from AA- to AA and Fitch upgraded us from AA- to AA+. So we now have the same, for Fitch, we now have the same debt rating as the federal government. So that's something. But again, this is, you'll see, I included the summary from Standard and Poor's, the highlights. It was, we were increased from AA to AA because our outlook's stable and it reflects their improved view of our city's finances due to our growth in available reserves during the past several fiscal years. So all of this work we've been doing to get our fund balance to a good state and to grow that to a, a good level for a city our size, it's being recognized.
Mom and dad noticed. Great.
Yeah.
All the hard work.
Gold star.
Yeah.
Can we go to Pizza Hut for dinner?
No, just Dairy Queen.
So yeah, that was good news.
Yeah.
That's great. That has been a lot of hard work over, what is it, 10 years?
Yeah.
Thank you. It's, you re-envisioned the whole financial picture and thank you.
Yeah, as I was reading through this, the, it's very, it's been very thoughtful and intentional, which I don't know if a lot of the community realizes this kind of stuff going on behind the scenes and this is some really interesting and exciting stuff because it helps pay for all the fun stuff that we get and just to have a healthy balance sheet. And, yeah, some of, like, the fiscal prudence is, is great, especially with the Parks and Rec Endowment Fund, that's, that's been awesome, that one and a half million dollar swing.
Yeah.
That's, it's incredible. So squirreling away money too, for our general fund. That I know when I was reading through the report, that was baked into there and that, that was part of their decision in having that reserve. So it's good to just have a healthy, healthy balance sheet and it's, it's encouraging. So
Yeah, we've built ourselves some options so that as the markets change, we can move money around a little bit to, to take advantage of the best market. And really, if we ever come to ask for money, it's because there's no other way. And you know, we've done a really good job of saving. We can use our own money to get some things done. Occasionally we'll have to borrow, but not often, like on a project like water infrastructure or something, it's just too big to rely on anything that we have saved to do it. But we've done a really good job, I think, collectively.
No, I agree, reading the whole section about, had we not created the endowment fund in 2015, I mean, we would have been, what, a million five lower than where we are now? So, I mean, that's nine years, so just making that decision put, was just such a smart decision. And we have seen, yeah, the, the significant returns, so. It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that's hard to follow up on, which is in the city manager's report.
Not much.
They write again.
Yeah, right.
The I think the universe heard us talking about Woodward Heights last month. Cause it's done. So that's
Did they put up bollards?
The bollard, yeah, they're in.
Okay.
So there's not many of them. It's not a bollard fest out there. There's just enough to mark where the transitions are. I don't think we need that many, once people start to get used to it. So there may be a few signs that they still have to move around, but yeah, they're, it's largely in. So we're in the transition period. We'll go take some traffic counts in about a month, after everyone gets used to it and accustomed to it and it becomes the new normal and see how traffic's behaving out there. As with everything, you know, it's probably, it's, it's gonna shave down those really excessively high speeds. But so far, it seems promising. On Sylvan, I think the day after we put in the two-sided parking, somebody had their side-view mirror taken off. On Woodward Heights, I think it took a week before someone had their side-view mirror taken off, but that was the only thing we had happen on Sylvan and again, once people become accustomed to it, those kinds of things settle down. That's an unfortunate side effect of that. Kensington Water Main, we're progressing. The, the water main has been fully installed. If anyone had a chance to be out there to see any of it, it's a very cool process for how they do that water main process. It's been fully tested, pressurized, it's ready to go. So the work that's been for the past week and a half has been all service line replacements. So the contractor has the new water main in the ground, it's functional, it's connected to the water, our overall water system. And now they're just going through and doing new service lines for everyone. So that's a public sideline and then if you have a private side-led line, they're replacing those as well. As with DeAngelo on past projects, I've had nothing but good comments about their professionalism, the quality of work they do. We've had, as always, we've had a couple things that, you know, didn't go exactly perfectly and they're, DeAngelo's been out the next day to make it right, to redo it, to fix it. So we're, we're very fortunate with the contractor we have, they make us look good. So that's been, that's been encouraging. You will notice that just when you thought you were done, Main Street is down a lane and that's related directly But wait, there's more. It's down a lane for now. They need to, the water main that they need to connect to at the east end is, I'm sorry, at the west end, is under Main Street, so they're gonna have to dig Main Street up. So that's where that lane closure is coming from. So that's gonna get worse before it gets better, unfortunately, but we're in the stretch run. That was, that part was delayed till the very end, so we have only the minimum amount of time necessary that we're impacting Main Street, but it may be a few weeks.
Will it shut it down altogether?
It will not. There'll be one lane open.
Okay.
So that'll be fun.
May I ask how many houses they're doing at a time for the lead service lines? Because I walked Kensington yesterday and I was pleasantly surprised by how many houses it appeared, just based on like the dirt pit, you know, the dirt, that they seem to have done a lot of the houses.
They've made a lot of progress. They can do four a day. One crew can do four a day.
Okay.
So it's been almost 10 days now, so they're probably about halfway through.
Yeah, that's what it looked like. I was really, and I haven't actually heard much about it from people, which is great. I haven't heard anything but good things, but I haven't in general heard a lot about it, so I was so surprised that so much of it looked done, which is great.
Yeah.
Great, that's awesome.
Yes, so they are very happy with that. Oakdale is our next project, so we're waiting on an Eagle permit, but we're ready to get rocking on that one, too. We've got the state money and we've got the funding, so we're gonna get going on Oakdale as soon as we can.
Are we thinking spring at this point?
Don't know. Again, we're, we're held up by Eagle.
Okay.
It's just taking them a long time to approve our permit.
Okay.
Once that happens, then we can start, put it out to bid.
Awesome.
Get that going.
Great.
Any questions about anything else going on around town?
Nope.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
I do have one quick question. The bike lanes on the east side, there's some arrows on it. Is that, are we getting the full?
So no. Initially, there was, the plans called for a center line, a yellow center line. And I, I lobbied to not put McDonald's french fries down the middle of our red cycle track, didn't think we needed it. There were going to be the charros, you know, the bike with the arrows pointing in both directions there. Problem we ran into is that, I guess this hadn't, it's just one of those things that comes up, the, the red concrete has a sealant on it. And in order to get that paint to adhere, they would have had to scrape off all of the sealant for that square around the bike image with the charros. We didn't want to do that. So we're looking into some options, potentially putting that in the street, right adjacent to the curb, where the bike, where the cycle track intersects the street. Or just foregoing it entirely, because I think people have pretty much figured it out.
That would be my vote.
I, I mean, I love the way it looks without the paint, so, and
I agree.
I do understand they write, I mean, you, you, right and left, I mean, we drive, we walk, I mean
It's interesting to see how people use it and it's getting multiple uses and that's actually good. It's a space that has been reserved. Now people can walk their dogs, they're not in the way of the bikes when there are bikes. People are being respectful, like it's so, it's so nice that people are being just naturally respectful of everyone that's on it. It's really interesting, so I would leave it without marks.
And I think, I think the thing is, you know, some, a lot of people walk on the cycle track. It's not really a problem because there's enough space and, I mean, it's 10 feet wide and like you said, it's very easy to, to move around. The only place you can't immediately or easily just go from the cycle track to the sidewalk is the block in front of Fields Art Building, because they're at the different levels and it's narrow. But yeah, it just, it's working. So I, let's just wait and, you know, I, I agree with not painting anything, certainly not on the red.
Nice.
And I think the beauty of all the planting and everything makes everybody a little